Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 8th Village Trustees Board Meeting. I would like to just acknowledge that we have a special guest here. George Washington is with us. So, welcome to the historic village of Tocco. So, could we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
Trusty Mayor.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Howell.
Present.
Trusty Taylor.
Present.
Trusty Crone.
Present.
Mayor Andrew.
Present, and so, we do not have any appointments or presentations today. We do have the public hearing to consider a recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission to designate the Ward House located at 230 White Plains Road as a local landmark. May I have a motion? Is this already open? No, right? Okay, so may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, the mic is now open for anyone that would like to come forward and weigh in on the designation of the Ward House as a landmark. Anybody? Sure?
Good evening, members of the board, Mayor. My name is Stephen Venerusso. I'm counsel to Biggest Fish LLC, the owner of 230 White Plains Road. I want to thank you for all being here today. Our office had been in talks with several of the departments in the village, and we had requested that the public hearing tonight be adjourned to a later date. Our kind of reason for doing that was we figured August is kind of a hectic month in terms of travel for the public and otherwise. So after my comments tonight, I would respectfully request that the meeting be held open to allow for additional time for the property owner to continue dialogue with the village, with the public, and also to submit additional information to the village. So at the end of my comments, I will make that request. So while I am here tonight, I would like to make some comments regarding, on behalf of the property owner, and our position on the proceedings. First and foremost, as I think everyone's aware, the property lies in a single-family district. It's privately owned, and for a number of years, the property was used by Concordia College for dormitory. My understanding is the dormitory was used by both students and faculty. Over the years, and I think as the board and others know, the property has changed, and the structure has changed. It's kind of, the interior at least, has been chopped up, it's been divided, it's been renovated, it's been added to, and I would submit that it's fundamentally been altered over the years. The interior of the structure was transformed for the aforementioned use by Concordia College as a dormitory, and in recent years, I would submit to the board that the properties, the neglect that it's been subjected to, has rendered it quite frankly unsafe, in our opinion. I would respectfully submit that the structure, at this point in time, in current time, is not a historical building due to these fundamental changes which I discussed. It's undergone a lot of changes over the years, and all of these changes were subject to our client purchasing it, and we would maintain again that it's not a historical building at this point due to these changes. We feel, and the owner of the property feels, that given the totality of the circumstances that we're dealing with here, they drive the decision that the property ultimately should not be landmarked in its current condition, not only due to the number of changes, but to the scope of these changes. I would also submit that, given the changes to the property over time and over many years, that the structure as it's been converted is not, it does not lend itself for the owner to modify it to be a single-family home. So, we're left with a question of what becomes of the property. Our client, I'm sure a number of members of the public are here tonight, has had discussions with the community, and it's our hope that, you know, these channels of communication can remain open throughout these proceedings. So, therefore, in light of these comments, I would again respectfully submit that the board, that this proceeding remain open either to September or October. We would, at a minimum, request that a minimum of 30 days in the future. This, again, this would allow the owner to submit in writing additional information to the village and continue dialogue with the public. We feel that, under the circumstances, such an adjournment is warranted, I feel it's reasonable, and of course, the status quo of the property would remain, so it wouldn't be to anyone's detriment, either the public or the owner. In closing, I just want to thank the board, the village, for its time, and we look forward to being back before this board, hopefully in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board regarding this historic landmark? And I would ask that you please keep your comments brief, because as you can see, there are a lot of people here, and we could be here all night.
Hello, Mayor.
Hello.
South Robinzano, 11 River Street, Tocco, New York. I'm the president of Friends of the Ward House, and I just wanted to reiterate that we put through a 62-page application that has several criteria that places the Ward House as a historic landmark in the village of Tocco. And in the law, the 11-page law, I didn't see anything in there about the condition of the site or the condition of the structure as making it either worthy or not worthy as a landmark. Since I last spoke to the board in July, we've solicited from other historic associations within Westchester whether or not they feel that the Ward House should be a historic landmark. We've gotten 12 testimonials, which I have in this book, and I believe many of them were sent directly to you, Mayor Andino.
They have.
And one of them was from the Westchester Revolution 250, which was a five-page testimonial as to why the Ward House should be landmarked. So, you know, I don't know what criteria the developer has given other than their own feeling that this should not be a landmark, but we have documentation, and we have testimonials that are stating plainly, without equivocation, that the Ward House should be landmarked and that it is a historic structure, that if it's torn down, it is going to be a tremendous tragedy. So, those are my remarks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone? Did you raise your hand, sir? David, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to weigh in? Okay. Yes, Mr. Forliano?
If you check YouTube, we put a two-minute summary of the immense historic significance of the Ward House. I've been town historian for Eastchester, includes Bronxville and Tocco, and I've taken numerous tours of the Ward House. It's only been in the last few years that the Ward House has deteriorated. I've been inside the Ward House. The fact that it was a dormitory, only the last year, it was a dormitory for college students. It was faculty housing, and there are people sitting in this audience that can attest to that. I have a picture on the YouTube video of what the house looked like when we were trying to pass historic preservation laws in 2006. I'm not going to take too much of your time, but just listen, and it's taken me a long time working with a lot of people, but to bulldoze this house down and not maintain it. And if you know anything about the historic preservation laws, there are three things in the Tocco Historic Preservation Law that are important. You have to maintain the condition. It makes me sick when I walk by the Ward House and see that porch caving in, when I see that no effort has been in even to power wash the Ward House. I don't want to take too much away from Friends of the Ward House, but, and I, maybe I'm overstepping, but we will do whatever we can, and I'm glad to see that he still wants to work with the community on this. But there's an historic corridor that starts at the Immaculate Conception Church through Iona University, and the heart of that historic corridor is that Ward House. Six founding fathers are directly or indirectly connected to the Ward House, but it's just not by the founding fathers. In those grounds, you have Native Americans, African-Americans, women, loyalists, a whole slew of people. I can go on and on, but I'm going to respect the mayor, and I'm going to stop my comments right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lottie Phillips, Tocco. I'm really coming in at the end or toward the middle of this, so I'm speaking not only as a resident, but as an educator. And whatever is being negotiated here is very important to this community. I am going to go from here to talk to the schools. I think that this Tocco High School, Bronxville, and if the acreage by the, and Eastchester is what it was, then it then includes Concordia Chapel School, Tocco School, Eastchester, and that we ought to be responsible here in this community, given the kind of rip that's going on with education, and what we should know and what we shouldn't know, and what is nice to know about slavery and what isn't. Apparently, there were 10 slaves there. Apparently, there's something about one of them escaped. This is not to bring anybody down. History is the story of what happened, and if it happened here, we need to look into it. Trusty Cronin, you have students who are interviewing. I'm going to speak to each of the school districts about doing a serious investigation of what happened here, because if that, the Ward House is as much acreage as I think, then that is, again, Concordia Chapel, Savinoy, Eastchester. We have the right in this community to know our history, to be proud of it in its knowledge. We have to stop acting like history is something that you go to the department store and buy an outfit. History is the story of what happened. Seems to me that we have Immaculate Conception, we have all of these iconic institutions here. Were they on that plantation? Someone needs to investigate it seriously and with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else? So Gary, can I ask you to just go over the process so that everyone is clear on the difference between the designation of a site as a landmark and then the process if changes want to be made?
So, obviously, what's before this board tonight is whether or not you're going to designate the Ward House as an historic landmark, and if this board is inclined to do it and doesn't, what's going to happen is it puts restrictions on the property owner, what he can and can't do with the property. So if he's going to look to alter it, demolish the property, he would file a building permit, and then that building permit would be sent basically to the Tocco Historic Commission for what's called a certificate of appropriateness. Now, a certificate of appropriateness will say whether or not he can make these changes to that structure. If the Tocco Historic Commission says yes, then he goes ahead and does it. If they do say no, then that, then the property owner then can appeal to this board their decision to say, "I need to do this, and there's a hardship, there's other things involved." There's a whole list of criteria for this certificate of appropriateness. And if he goes to this board and this board rejects him again, rejects the property owner and says, "No, we don't think you should be doing any changes to this property," then he can take this up to the court up in Westchester and have a judge decide at that point. But that's what it would do tonight. If you put this designation on it, then it does put restrictions on this property, what the property owner can and can't do with the property.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to say a final word? Okay, having said that, the next, are we talking about the adoption of the July 11th meeting minutes, David, on the agenda? Okay, may I have a motion? Okay, to adopt the minutes of the July 11th Board of Trustees meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And this brings us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items only. If there's anyone that would like to address the board on any agenda items? Okay, thank you. And so, our first resolution talks about the designation of the Ward House, and I just want to reiterate that what our attorney has said is that this meeting and this vote is solely to designate the Ward House as a landmark. What happens to it after? That's a different part of the process, and I think everyone needs to understand that. This vote doesn't mean that the Ward House stays up or not. It's basically saying that some really important things happened at that site, not necessarily the building itself, which is part of it, but there is much more to the designation of the site as a Ward House, the landmark. The Tocco Historic Preservation Commission presented to the board the criteria for why they designated the Ward House as a landmark, and our law is very specific. So they had to meet certain criteria in order for it to be designated before they could bring it to the board. And so here we are. I think that we've had enough opportunity to discuss whether it's met the criteria or not, and I think this board has enough information to vote on it tonight.
Yes.
Yes, I will. So, having said that, is there anything else, Gary, that you want to mention? Okay, so I'm just going to ask now for a motion to, yes? Okay, sure?
Thank you for allowing me to come back up. I just want to put on the record, so I would formally object to a vote happening tonight. I think there's no, I believe the board has the authority to put the meeting, hold the meeting over, and I feel that, again, there would be no detriment to the public or to the owner of the property to allow for additional time for members, both of the public and from the owner's side, to come forth, provide additional information. Again, we felt the August meeting was somewhat of a rush because of the scheduling, and again, I would formally request and urge this board to at least adjourn it one month. We would formally request two months, but again, if the board would adjourn it one month, we feel, again, no one would be prejudiced by that, and that's the request I would make here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your request. So I would just ask, oh, Sal?
And I want to go on record also saying that I would, I would object to a vote not being taken tonight. I believe that there's enough information, there is enough third-party testimonials to the validity of the Ward House as a landmark, has nothing to do with the condition, has nothing to do with anything else other than the historic criteria of which we have well surpassed what the criteria should be within our 62-page application. And so I would strongly object if a vote was not taken tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so may I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? I thank you all for your comments, and this board will vote tonight on whether or not we will designate the Ward House as a landmark. So may I have a motion authorizing upon recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission the designation of the Ward House located at 230 White Plains Road as a local landmark? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Will you do a roll call, Camille?
Trusty Annalor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Howell.
In favor?
Trusty Taylor.
In favor?
Trusty Crone.
In favor?
Mayor Andrew.
In favor. And so, the Ward House is designated as a landmark, and the process with the developer will continue as needed. The second resolution authorizing the street of Bella Vista for the annual Parkview Heights block party on Saturday, September 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution number three, may I have a motion authorizing the use of Washington Street and a portion of Union Place for the annual Tocco Housing Authority? It's actually Tocco Day, right? I think, or Family Day, on August 20th with the rain date of August 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'd like to add to this resolution, a, like a 3A, David, asking for a motion to partner with the Tocco Housing Authority on Family Day, and that the village would donate $400 in the effort to have that day. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and the fourth, fifth, well, fourth resolution authorizing the sale of a 2015 Dodge Charger with a mileage of 6,100 miles to the highest bidder, Mr. Ivanov of Lynn, Massachusetts, for $13,100.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And also authorizing the sale of a 2014 Ford Explorer Police Utility to the highest bidder, Mr. Hurlbutt of Mount Vernon, Ohio, for $7,900.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we have some dates for you to remember. September 12th is our next village board meeting, our full board meeting. We will have movie night at the Main Street Park on August 19th, featuring Sonic the Hedgehog 2. Say again?
Hedgehog 2.
Oh, 2. Sonic, not, yes, you tell kids the wrong thing, you're in trouble. Sonic the Hedgehog 2, parents, make sure they know that. And I also want to make note that we have had a request for movie date night at the park for some residents, so I'm sure Trusty Cronin is thinking about that already.
We're on it.
All right, and that takes us to the second opportunity to address the board on any items, agenda or not. Do I have anyone that would like to come forward? Laura?
I'm Laura Hollitz. I live at 14 Winslow Circle. I just wanted to make a brief comment. I just wanted to come down and personally thank Mayor Andino, Deputy Mayor Howell, and Administrator Burke. I was having an issue that I asked the village for help with, and they've been so responsive and so helpful, and I just wanted to say thanks for the great leadership here in Tocco, and thanks again.
You're welcome.
So sweet.
Thank you. Yes, Tony?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I think Midland Place, I think Main Street is the state road, right?
Yeah, that's the county.
Is there anything possible way from Midland Place and Main Street, but do not block the intersection? Sometimes you're at the stoplight, they block it right there, and you try to make the left, they look at you like you're stupid or something. Okay, you know, I'm trying to go around you, you know? They put a line there or a box or something over there.
We can, we can take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I understand how that might happen.
Anyone else would like to address the board?
Oh, Myra, can I say something about the vote?
Absolutely.
At the moment?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be now?
Yep.
Okay, good. So I wanted to convey to the, to the village that, and perhaps I'm oversharing in some regards, but I struggled actually quite a bit with the Ward House vote, not because I didn't feel inspired and awed and felt an importance to the historic experience and the historic record kind of on that site. What I struggled with were the financial implications of this, of this property and giving it landmark status, because the financials, if I were to be my, my good Excel spreadsheet-loving self, would say, "Gosh, the model here is insurmountable." But I let the emotional element, because sometimes the emotion is more important than the logic aspect, and that's why ultimately I voted in favor kind of of giving landmark status to the Ward House. But the journey on this has seriously just begun, because it will require significant kind of financial resources kind of behind it. It will require significant and open collaboration with the builder and the developer, and significant flexibility and innovation to, to make this work. So I certainly implore the village of Tocco, the Friends of the Ward House, our Historic Commission, to kind of come at this with kind of the most positive of intent and the most serious of nature, because the last thing that we want is kind of a house that languishes and further runs down and becomes a burden kind of on the village. So please, understand and recognize this as the beginning of a very long journey to ensure the sustainable support of the Ward House.
Thank you, trustee. Deputy Mayor?
So we celebrated our 120th anniversary this year here in Tocco, and I think certainly for that entire 120 years, people have recognized the significance of the Ward House to the community. You know, in many publications, in many, much of the work that has been done at the history committee now by the Friends of the Ward House. Just in a weekend of doing a little research on my own, I found out that another person who had been in that house is Aaron Burr, and he was dispatched at the time from West Point, which is a place near and dear to my heart. So just an immense amount of history in that building, and I hope this is a lesson to us all of how important local government is, right? There are many structures here, many things worth preserving, and I think folks in, you know, over the 120 years have, have looked at things like a federal registration law, but to know that you can have the power in your community here to do something, I think this is a lesson I hope that we all walk away with here from what we're doing this evening. The second thing I would really ask the Friends of the Ward as a commitment, you know, as the mayor mentioned, the process, you know, now a big process begins, and it can go so many ways. I hope everybody keeps themselves open to the possibilities that come from this landmarking event. But I would ask the Friends of the Ward House as part of that and part of, from the village to be committed to tell history accurately, I think, which is what Ms. Phillips was getting at. So there were patriots here, no doubt, but there are also enslaved people. There were actually three people enslaved, and that was reported in a census, the first census, I believe, that was done in the 1700s. That's all available information on the John J. College has a database of enslaved people, and actually, when you go into it, there were a lot of enslaved people in the Eastchester area. So to recognize that there were enslaved people on this property as well, and also to, to recognize the role of Native Americans in, in our history, to recognize all of our history is, is the commitment I'd like to get from both the village and the Friends of the Ward House.
Anyone else? Okay, and I will, I also just want to reiterate, I guess, the sentiments of my colleagues when... When I first was elected as mayor, my actual first order of business was the designation of the commission, of the Tocco Historic Commission. When so many people said, new people don't care about Tocco, it was this mayor and this board here who passed this law, our first law that we ever passed, because we understand the importance of history. Having said that, many of us here struggled with the Ward House. And what we had to do was compartmentalize, or de-compartmentalize, I guess, that there's the designation of the site, and then what happens to it is another story. And that's the beginning of the story. So I want to reiterate what our deputy mayor said, that we have to remain open. We have to try our best to look at things from the developer's side as well, because these, you know, this is someone who is putting their money, their hard-earned money, into this property, and if it's a hardship to the point where their hands are tied, then it could be a problem for the village. So it's important for us to work together and to work collaboratively and to find a solution that works for everyone while honoring our history, which is really the intent of this law, is to honor our history. So having said that, I appreciate you all here. Mr., Mr. Washington, thank you for joining us. And I think this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, Tocco. We will see you in September.